January 20th.
One more time.
I think that's it. I would like to, if you would please, read the minutes of the last meeting, November 15, and if you haven't already, entertain a motion to accept them.
Motion to accept the minutes?
So. All in favor? The minutes will be accepted and filed in SAI. Thank you. We are...
No, I'm willing to keep going.
It's not necessary to designate an alternate night, so we will on all business. Arnie Martel, Youngs Ridge Road, pre-application and review. So just so we know, any of you who have with us, the ITV audience?
Yes, I'm Brad Jones, I'm with the Jones of Beach Engineers, and I'm representing Arnie Martel on his property at 760 Youngs Ridge Road.
Thank you, I'm welcome. Tell us what you have going.
I did give everybody a handout, and it's a kind of a colored plan, and it shows the property that Arnie Martel owns, it's on 760 Youngs Ridge Road. And what we've done is come up with a cluster subdivision, which each one of these lots is pretty much an acre, and then the shorefront lots are two and a half acres with 250 feet of frontage. They're actually a little over-sized beyond that. And then if you see, so all the lots are shown and numbered, they're kind of like that lighter green, the pea-green I call it, that would be the open space area, and you can see that kind of encompasses the subdivision at this point. And that gray line down through the center, that would be the proposed road that would have a hammerhead turnaround at the end, and that would come right off of Youngs Ridge Road.
How many acres was the open space?
Right now, we are required to have 37.8 acres, and we have 43.6. So we may kind of reconfigure this a little bit, but this is pretty much the plan that we were presented.
And just for remembering, this is the original subdivision we did last year, the seven acres on Buzzell.
Yeah.
Those ones up there.
The lots in the white, yeah, that's the subdivision, it was a road frontage subdivision on Buzzell that was approved.
Yep.
And you can see on the right-hand side where it says site notes, that kind of goes through the zoning, the dimensions of zoning requirements, and also the acreage, and how we came up with that calculation for the open space.
So according to this view, you actually start off on lot one is strictly on Youngs Ridge Road?
It actually has plenty of...
But not on the new, what would be the new road?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see what the...
Does that sort of dog lake?
Yeah, because out of that, there's a stone wall that does exist, but that lot line goes over that stone wall.
Okay.
Yep, so there's, I think there's 50 feet or something like that frontage on there.
So the dog lakes are, and there's some golf courses, is that what you're saying?
And the golf courses?
When we had a crisis street from these, and so... What, who's this at?
217.
217.
That's not my house.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's my abstract. That's a residential home. The Amaro. And the lots and the various old, pre-old bond, which is ready to fall over, that's the lots to the right. And then the Horn family to the left on that, like 30 acres over there.
These dotted lines between lots nine and eight, is that essentially like your road going down to the water?
Well, I have it pretty much mainly if somebody, when the house is ever built, if they're ever built, somebody if they wanted to walk down and take the golf cart down to the water, they could park their golf cart right there, or they just walk the pathway down to the lake. That's what I was for. I don't want nobody, with the association's going to be, I'm going to be pretty strict. There's no cars allowed to park on the street.
No cars on the street?
No. This is where it keeps people from, you know, other areas coming in, and now if somebody wanted to come in and park their car over in that area, they can't. There'd probably be a few more squats in that for walking, if they wanted to walk all about the green open space around the property, or, you know, for sites here, you know, walking through the open space, they get parked there, but there'd be no parking on the street.
But they can all have beach rights?
Uh, yes.
And you'll notice like lot 12, that does not have frontage.
Right.
So that open space now wraps around and encompasses some of that light frontage. So yeah, there's a reason for the open space to kind of expand.
So that all lots will have access to that beach area down there for all?
Yeah, at all, any of the open space, basically.
Okay, so...
The dark green's a little wider than it looks, it's more of, it's more beach rights than it appears, looks. The lady that was doing the plan went a little bit wider to the left, so I'm just going to describe it all, it's a lot more, I'll have a better plan, so, that's me, I'll have a better plan, but there's quite a bit of frontage down there.
Yeah, this is kind of small scale, this is more just to kind of get orientated with the property, we won't, you know, we'll come in with a full set of plans and detail these areas, lot areas, lot sizes, and all that. The idea was we would just get, get this up front on the board, and kind of answer any questions, and then we'll get, kind of finalize it.
So this was how the property looked when you purchased it. Since then, we've erased this line here, you've done your seven lots up along the street, and did you also acquire 30, lot 30?
Yes.
Yep, so that's where it's kind of merging in with it. That's where lot one actually is, is into there. So the existing house that's on this lot 30, does that stay or go?
Uh, my intentions, it looks like until I get into it, I'm probably just going to maybe relocate it on lot one.
Yeah.
Excuse my voice here, I'm a little getting my butt kicked from the... Yeah, the hiphopper is knocking, killing me. I don't have any sight either anymore, so I'll just excuse my throat. But anyhow, I'm going to probably just relocate it, once I get in there and take a look at it, but it's in pretty good shape. Into, right over the lot one, where it says lot one, put it right in that corner right there.
Yep, yep.
And if it's good, I'd like to use the existing driveway coming in to go to that lot.
To Youngs Ridge?
Yes.
And just when we're in the process of the homeowners association, a lot of times when people don't have a driveway on the subdivision, they feel they don't need to pay dues, they're not, you know, they become, I don't get these rights, or something like that, so we'll just make it clear that that lot is part of this whole subdivision, wouldn't be going through the process.
And they'd be in the team, wouldn't they?
Correct.
They would be in the team.
And you got the wood here, so I'm, oh yeah, I'm, it's going to be a...
And I don't get any services.
Yeah.
You know, what?
Yeah, it would be a strict project, and that's for sure.
Isn't there another stone wall going down through there?
Along Youngs Ridge?
Uh, yeah, on the right-hand side of the Buzzell Road.
Yeah, I'd like to take and remove that, because there's some big trees around Youngs Ridge Road, before you get to my driveway, they're all overgrown, there's like four, two pines, two maple trees, and they're dead. So I don't think the town will ever take it down, but I don't want to take them all down, move the walls back, because it's too close to the road, and the drainage keeps washing out, it's an expense for the town. So I'd like to move that wall back, maybe eight feet, get it off the top, probably put it on mine, rebuild all the walls coming in. Thank you. That's my intention right there.
Well, is that wall there, and is there another one that goes down over the hill?
Well, there is, when we went on the sidewalk, wasn't there one that, yeah?
Yeah, it goes all the way to Buzzell Road, it's a little hard to see, but there's a wall that runs all the way to Buzzell Road, all the way back, and you can see it's, it comes back onto lot one and two there. Oh yeah, it is there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it.
It's just a lot of...
I'm looking at it sideways. I see it now.
Yeah, it's on top of the other line.
Yep.
Sort of a smudging line.
Yeah.
Right here?
Right, right there.
Yeah, the one that runs, comes out of the original three dash one, comes over there, and then the other one runs along the edge of the wood lines.
Oh, yeah.
But he isn't the only one who's...
Yep.
Right.
So this is only a pre-application meeting, if something jumped out to somebody, we just want to address it before we start with the next set of plans, and we get the application going, and...
So none of these actually are going to go directly onto Youngs Ridge Road, more or less?
Yeah.
None of them will?
Nope.
There's no driveway, no curb cuts, or anything like that?
Well, only lot one.
Lot, yeah, lot one. And that's existing, aren't they?
Yes.
That's existing.
We won't even change the 911 address for that, that'll stay the 740.
That stone wall to left your driveway, I'm going to move that back, rebuild it, and bull entrances, I like to put a stone wall at the entrance, probably 50 feet coming down the road, so that's the only way you're going out of that project, is coming down.
Down through here?
Yeah.
The intersection?
Yeah.
That road that you're putting in, is that the old road that used to go down to the lake, the shape of it, basically?
Uh, yes.
That dry stream that we saw?
What's that?
The dry stream.
That was over in this area.
Yeah, that green area, and it's just kind of a smaller area, but that's the wooded area.
The wooded, yeah, okay.
There's a stream in here, but it dries right up, believe it or not.
Right, well, when we were there, it was absolutely dry, yeah.
Believe it or not, all that water goes towards Wilson Lake. I was shocked when I figured which way it was going, but you'd be surprised, once you know that right, the water goes the opposite way. That's why it's so dry. The road's pretty much degraded, as I was in there cleaning up and working. If you have a sidewalk where some well to do next week, it'd be good, not to change the subject, but the road, I could probably plow it, but I was going to hold off, you could have some rain, so now you'd be able to really sit and walk it or drive down the road. That's probably within four, five, six inches of finished grade, so you'll have, I designed it as with the contour of the land, so if you walk or drive down, that's going to be the finished grade. Within five, six inches, you'll have a noticeable difference.
Did you say what the road frontage was for lot two?
Yeah, lot two, I'd be guessing a little bit, because it's, I think it's over 100 feet.
Two? Doesn't have any till one inch?
No, on a cluster, actually, there's no regulation on the width of the frontage that I can find. So we did, we tried to keep everything around 150, but I think, you know, we have cases that sometimes we go down to 25 feet at a minimum and have a long driveway, you know, not in this case, but so to me, that would be the minimum.
But under number two, on the site notes, doesn't it say lot road frontage, minimum 250?
Yeah, so that is for a conventional subdivision.
Well, this is not for the cluster?
Yeah, not for the cluster, yeah.
Two quick questions. Diana, Ken. Does this trigger the, I don't know whether it's a subdivision review or zoning, the issue that relates frontage area to numbers of lots that are allowed to use that?
Are you thinking backlot, developers?
I just remember, we haven't accounted it for quite a while, but there's a rule of thumb for X number of lots with frontage conveyances, I don't know if that's the term to use, but...
You normally?
Yeah. If you convey rights to access a little bit of shorefront, it's down there, there was a ratio stipulated of width per lot and containers.
4.33, it's at the end of, 4332, page 39. So in the pre-pre-application meeting, we sat down with Mr. Martel, the attorney, and that was a topic of discussion. We were hoping to avoid tonight until we get the attorney's opinion and our attorney's opinion. We talked about this a few years ago, and I had a concern that it was kind of under commercial. I'll wait for everyone to get onto it. Tom's in the yellow book.
What's that, right?
It's in the commercial section, under commercial, but it says pertaining to 433, which really brings the whole section in, in my opinion. That ordinance has been there for over 30 years, at least, I would assume, and so it was before cluster subdivisions, conservation subdivisions were really around. It may not, and I'm waiting for the town attorney to work with us on this, it may not pertain to a cluster subdivision, because they're giving great, they're giving rights to the open space, which we're telling them they have to do, which generates waterfrontage. Originally, they were fixated, we talked docs for quite a while, and our ordinance really doesn't regulate how many docs, how we build docs, and things like that, so that would be a whole nother plan and a conditional use when we get into the docs more than likely. But so that one section where it talks pertaining to section 433, if shoreline privileges is conveyed, they can clearly just not convey the shoreline privileges. Everyone in there may be able to use the waterfront, but they just don't have deeded access, is one way to do it. So there's a few different alternatives they have, and once we have an application and we're moving forward, we'll have that determination between our attorney and their attorney, and those would just be opinions, we'll be able to present to the board, and surrender the board's opinion that'll matter at that point.
I would suggest that we maybe take a vote either tonight and/or at our next meeting, for the notion that we might want to get Southern Regions help with this review. We haven't had a subdivision come across our desk in, I want to say, 10 years, maybe, even more?
As far as a major.
A major thing?
Yeah, I mean, the last one we did was a major subdivision, seven lots as well, too, but there was no roads being built, this is contours down to the water. And usually, developers like a professional planner involved with it versus emotional boards, quite often, there's usually more oppositions with them, it usually doesn't hurt them, everything's right up and open and straightforward right from the beginning.
Yeah, and I think it generally makes for a more transparent process.
Yeah.
And part of that ordinance probably came back when Colby Rick put that development down. Put that road on the left there.
Will.
Will Street.
Will Street.
Because all those people have deeded access to the lake down there.
And there's several 15-foot accesses all over town that dozens of lots have rights to, and the problem becomes, you have 15 feet, you put a dock, you're putting the dock to one side, and then you put your boat in front of it, now you're in front of somebody else's, and you've got so many people forced into 15 feet.
I think that's just a deeded use to the...
I think it's the Beach Association is what that was called, or something like that.
Lost all the people.
Yeah. How many feet of waterfront is with the open space?
Right now, the total frontage is 1,280 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
And we'll lose 500 for the first two blocks, so the remaining, now that's frontage falling along the line of the shore.
Straight line?
Yeah, so we're going to be 780.
Seven, 780.
780, yep.
But how much are you paying, how much frontage are you paying taxes on?
Well, I would say all of it, right?
No, it's about 800, if you look at the...
Oh, okay.
...professor's report.
Which is going to be point to point.
Right.
Yeah, so that's a straight line distance?
Right, a straight line distance, not a...
Right, that's where we are, straight line.
Yeah, I mean, if we did this kind of distance just for the state of Maine, some of us would be living in Florida.
Okay.
Just straighten it out like that.
Ken, a question that, is the fact that he already has one development going, is one or the other impact the other from the town's point of view?
From the town, I would say no, but with the DEP, when they do this stormwater stuff, they're going to bring in the other seven lots, the open space, they're going to look at all the picture as well.
All together.
Yeah. Have you guys started stormwater?
Uh, no, we wanted to go to this meeting first, we are ready to do that, we just have to do the high-intensity soil survey, finalize that, and then we would be ready to go.
Yeah.
Have you done this week?
Yes, I think he's going to try to finish that this week, yeah.
Ken, another issue that I'm just recollecting, we used to, in the instances where we had a cluster subdivision proposal, we would ask that an alternate site plan be developed that would illustrate conventional lots on zoning, and the, I thought the notion was that the number of lots that could be developed under conventional zoning were not to be exceeded under the proposal of cluster zoning.
Yeah.
Again, this is old terrain, but we haven't, we haven't encountered some of these issues that this plan presents us with.
Yeah, and usually, the board's always pushed towards cluster, and we've always had a conventional to look at, and usually, it just reiterates the positive for the whole community that the cluster subdivision would be versus a traditional.
Right.
Which in this case would be more roads, you'd have more roads out there, because there's still 40, 43 acres, so another 20 lots roughly into that, but you'd just have more roads, so 15 maybe.
Just another important issue, I'm not going to call it a constraint, because I don't know how it's going to play out, but I think that the board and Brad and Arnie are to look closely at some of these cluster subdivision events. The other thing I'm curious about is phasing in the proposed construction time of these. I'm going to think of maybe David Jones was the last time we encountered something of this size. And this, I think, is a little more dense than Independence Way, how many lots are in Independence Way?
28. I think it's two, 14 lot subdivisions, and they tried to call it two separate subdivisions that had nothing to do with each other, even though both owners were David's, but they had nothing to do with each other.
Because that was built by owners, was the other?
He bought a lot up and had an auction, I think, or private auction, which of course...
I mean, one reason, I would assume, to do it this way was so that you could also generate more open space.
Yeah, that's why the plan was always pushed towards cluster, and I thought that's why the section of the ordinance said, "We want to see cluster and traditional," so the board could determine which was the better, and it's usually always the cluster.
I don't know, Minkowski, didn't he have shared space down by the water there?
Yeah, I think he had a thousand feet of it. He really wasn't the most desirable frontage.
Is that like a 14 lot?
That's a lot, those 19 lots are 18, and 25 feet, everybody.
That's wrong, because it's 15.
15 trees, something like that.
It brings more stormwater in from DEP, Army Corps of Engineers. If we did the straight line there, we're roughly 800.
And not everybody had access, just those that...
Uh, there's common space right down from here, I believe, and oddly enough, nothing's ever been built in this subdivision.
That was a conventional?
Uh, that was a cluster with open down here. But, maybe some of these are pretty big lots. Yeah, it's two acres, one to two acres, yeah.
This is inside, Arnie, have you had any sales on Buzzell Road?
Yes, yes, yeah, I've got two houses sold. I decided I was going to sell the lots, but I just, so I had full control over there up there, I'm just real nervous selling lots to people, because then I can't have any control, I mean, I could just load it up, you know, with rights, what am I doing up at that? We sold two, me and my son are going to build, so right now, I'm looking, I'm just going to build all of them, take my time this year, I'm going to sell a couple, that's all I want to do, you know, but yeah, I got some sales, good for the tax basis. I get a lot of money from houses, and small houses, it's people that are coming from, well, there's 600 now for the houses, so no families, just retired people, just want to get out, just a place to go, they don't care about a little beach, if they can walk around the open space, they'd be happy, but...
But you're proposing this for the new proposal?
Uh, no, it's all separate.
No, you mentioned an age restriction?
Uh, no, no age, no, but it's just, that's, I think that's what I'm getting, there's nobody with kids going to spend that kind of money coming up, it's just a secondary home, they probably have grandkids or something for the weekend or something like that, those are the two people that I've sold them to. We just bought a foundation for today, so...
And you're proposing on the new application in front of us tonight? And you're proposing on the new application in front of us tonight, the age restriction?
No. My goal is to put the street in, because I do wanna build for the family. My son, my daughter, on lot fourteen, so, and I'm, I wanna be up on three. That's, that's why I left that, this big lot up there, this is where my house is now. But if I put that road in, it's just, it's so expensive to put in with all the utilities and electricity and stuff. So I figured, well, I'll just get this approved. In a perfect world, I don't even wanna build this, develop it, and I just wanna get it approved, and I'll just pay the tax basis on it, but, you know, this way, they run all the utilities in, all underground electricity, you know, maybe the storm wall, nice entrance, indeed, speech lock, and just leave it so I can cut the grass and maintain it. That's, that's, that's what I'd like to do, you know? So it ain't like I'm gonna build, build this whole thing out in two years, three years, it gonna happen. But that's the frontage, I mean, is on that road, and that's why, that's why before you have to get it approved.
So that road will be a Class B road?
Yes, private road. This way, the association, the open space, they'll, they'll be some good deed covered. It's not, I'm gonna have control over it now, and that'll be a private road. No cost of the towns, no plowing, I like to cut the open space and cut the grass and keep it natural. We'll plow it, sand it.
If you can get them, once you go past the horn family.
Yeah.
And you get out past, look, the ham road.
Yeah.
If you need the town, you start maintaining that road at one time. When I was a kid, we used to slide down that hill. And it was a lot of fun, so if you get a bunch of kids up there, it'd be a nice place for you to slide.
Really, where at?
Oh, yeah, way down the tide road.
Oh.
The town didn't use to plow that and use to slide down.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
We'll have them up there with the to follow them.
It's a warm one back up, though.
Exactly. Some of the, some of the things I'm hearing is, Tom, you think it's a very good idea we'd be in touch with Southern Maine Regional?
Yeah, they, in the past, they, I don't know if you sat in on any of those meetings.
Yeah.
In the past, they keep us from stepping into.
Right, and I think it's a good idea, I think, I don't know that we need an actual motion on that, but I will ask you if you're on agreement with that.
I'm in a motion.
I don't know if we need one, we need, we want the expertise, we wanna keep us going, and we'll, we'll go from there, we'll make the appropriate phone calls.
Can we use two years ago? Sometimes, most times, it never get done, but when they approve subdivisions, required that they put fire ponds. Is that?
This is gonna have sprinklers versus the fire ponds. So a fire pond will never save anybody's life or home, it's just gonna fill the fire trucks and lay back to the station, in my opinion. But if they have sprinklers.
I've got a fire pond, greedy as waste.
But the sprinklers would actually, if your couch is on fire, because you're.
Swallow is always a sprinkler.
Correct.
I'd rather go with a pond.
They love to.
But sprinklers and CO2 alarms and all that.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, yes.
Yeah, everything, yeah, good.
The only thing I'm picking up really is this trail down to the water that's gonna stop a hundred feet back from the water, in any parking lots and things like that. So the golf carts will stop at the hundred foot, and I just can't tell with the scale, however off it is.
Oh, yeah.
So hold that back with the vegetated buffer.
Yeah, those like this.
Yeah, I'll make sure that that's a hundred feet.
Where are, where are we on the evolution of turnarounds?
For the main road?
For the main road?
Yeah. Yeah, he's got a hammerhead dam at the end of it. It's fairly easy with this one here.
We, we, no pun intended, go round and round with turnarounds.
Yeah, I think everyone's going to hammerheads versus the cul-de-sacs.
I don't understand the rationale, but that's what they're doing.
The hammerhead? Sucks the lot, that, cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
There's much more to it.
It's easier.
And who's gonna have access to the water? Would it just be the, the houses in the subdivision?
That's it, no one else is owned.
Yeah, because that open space would be for all the people in the subdivision.
For twice.
That, that's why, you notice, I have green space around. Due to the open space projects that I've done, the clusters back at home, I noticed in our last subdivision, they should have open space surrounding all the outside. So that more or less keeps the people out and keeps these people in, and it gives them a nice path to walk around. You know, so you can't say, "Well, why are you cutting it, why are you walking on my backyard?" That's what open space is, for that concept, to have open space so people can trap on foot. So I left it, green space around all the lots, so that will keep people in and keep people out. But yes, there'll be, there won't, there'll be nobody, like I said, this is gonna be a private road. And you got the ward in here that's gonna be up front, and I'm gonna make it so nobody can ride down it naturally. So the park and the road go to the lake, ain't happening.
But your first subdivision, they'll also have access?
No, no, no. Because those are regular, just four A lots, that's what we call, those are two acre, four A lots, it's on a public road. So they have a right to just go to the back of the lot line. Now, if they wanna walk through the grassy field, which is gonna be grassed back there, it's, I'm gonna have that a nice meadow. And they can be cut like my side, but, you know, I can't send, I can't walk over there, they ain't gonna be able to drive down there. I mean, there's some gravel road through the woods now, but, I mean, once again, the two people I sold those two houses for, they're older, their kids are older, they're retired.
How far is it?
From?
From, say, from, from lot three one, three dash one.
From there to the lake?
Yep.
Oh, it's probably quarter of a mile, all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, at least.
At least. And I guess it would be that walk back that might do in the, people of a certain age.
Yeah.
I believe it's all okay.
Yeah. I have a way back.
And there will, there will be a homeowners association, so all these lot owners who will pay dues and the way kind of maintenance required for the open space, so it'll, it'll be, you know, it's not only Andy that would police it, I mean, they're gonna actually have ownership of that and, and make sure that, you know, something's not going on that shouldn't be on that property.
Right, right, well, you know, how the same used to be.
Oh, yeah, they get out of control of something.
All day.
We've been on the set till eleven o'clock at night, it's pretty hard.
That's, that's a dip off on the, the homeowners association and a road association.
Fairly similar, the homeowners association's gonna have a lot more restrictions versus the road association, just a little. So your homeowners could say, no vital siding, no manufactured homes, no chickens, no.
No use in these certain colors of paint.
Yeah.
Some of them go so far as to say, no flying, or no, no guests, you know, two weeks at a time.
No, no RVs, yeah, no RVs, no.
So would you have both, a road association?
Um, when, when it comes to, when it comes to, you know, hopefully with the help of our brother Ken, yeah, whatever it takes to, to, to guide us, and, and the lawyers, I'm gonna do the max or whatever I can do. If they say we should have it for the land and the road, so we can do it that way, either way.
Yeah.
As long as it's protected.
Yeah, no, I'm just curious how.
And usually, it's self-policing, if you've got a community that's fifty-five and older, they're pretty much the first ones that are on top of, you know, lot three, she's, you know, they're not fifty-five, they're, you know, they're the ones that, that take care of those issues.
And normally, that, I mean, that's also gonna take care of the plowing, the association, the maintenance of the road, the maintenance of the drainage, too, because we're gonna have a drainage pond that'll be constructed, and then that's, that's all the responsibility of all the homeowners to make sure that's.
So you wouldn't have a statutory road association, the homeowners association?
I think it would be just homeowners, I would think, that way it's all.
Not that they, there's different kinds of road associations, too.
Yeah.
It's not just statutory.
Yeah, and that's really taken off in the last few years, where you've had so many private roads that are existing versus this is all brand-new, established with a president of the association, vice president, treasurer, and then the verbiage on when the association takes it over from the developer, which is usually, you know, after fifty percent of the lots, or after the last one. Seventy-five, seventy-five. How you gotta set it up and.
I, I like to try to go right to the end as far as.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it gives you all control.
I don't think, I mean, once again, these ain't gonna be cheap houses, you ain't gonna get no, these are gonna be expensive houses up there, so, I mean, I'm already at seven, seven hundred for the houses over, over Buzzell Road, so he is gonna be right up there, so you ain't gonna have people just, you know, ain't gonna be able to buy a, you know, seven hundred, you know, about a house and just let it go to hay, you know? So they're gonna, they're gonna be watching, enabling it, too, you know? Even, even the lakes, houses on the lakes. They're not gonna just let people just cut through and just destroy the place either, so this, they like their twenty-five dollar houses, they're gonna have outhouses and trails parked all over the place, so this is gonna be a high, a great tax base for you people.
I'd like to firm that business up, the inclusion of Southern Maine Regional as a, as a motion.
That's fine.
I'd like to move that the planning board seeks the assistance of the Southern Maine Regional Planning Agency to help with the review of the subdivision submitted on December twentieth by, I'm, my turn. Second.
Second. Don't, I'm sorry, go on.
Just to clarify that, the current terms of that.
Hang, hang on.
I think the current terms of that specifying that the developer is, is paying for the cost of that review, that ought to be stipulated in the motion there. So they're aware of what we're asking for.
So who's gonna review it? The.
The planning commission.
Planning commission, we have a Southern Maine that we turn to for a lot of, our own education and edification, things like that, they come in for a pull, but they are, you know, these are professionals who do this.
Approximately, what would be the cost of that?
Maybe a couple of grand.
Couple of grand.
Will they, will they come to a meeting, or do you do the same?
We can usually meet with them ahead of time, they'll give us a, a list of things, similar to how we've sat down with the other ones, and then we'll take care of the list. You guys, you know, shrink the list down, and, and at that point, your professional planner's been through it, you, we, everything's all done, cleaned up, ready to go, and then the board can, can go from there with it. I think just for clarification, Tom's motion was talking about the application submitted tonight. We don't have an application yet, we're pre-app still, so, but the Southern Maine Regional's a good asset to use.
Generally means you guys have to submit the same one that you would be submitting to us.
Sure.
With a little lead time for those folks to do that.
But it would be your application, your actual application.
Yeah, I think that's our next step.
Yeah.
That's no problem.
So Tom sets, we have second, but nobody actually voted. Would you like to just clarify your motion, so we can have a nice.
My motion is that the planning board seeks the help of Southern Maine, it's not Southern Maine Regional, planning and development, I think it is.
Planning and development.
To help review with the pre-application and ensuing paperwork submitted on December twentieth, like I'm marked down.
Before I ask for a second, I think it should be the application, not the pre-application, because this doesn't tell us everything exactly the way it's gonna be.
Okay.
So we want it to be on the application itself, okay with you?
Yeah. Are you okay with that?
Um, do you have done, anyone else, a motion?
I'm still good with this.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't try, I didn't try.
Okay, if you would.
Do you have any?
Okay, so is there, we have done second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Thank you. I think.
What, roll them tonight?
No. Your job is to sit there.
I was doing pretty good.
You're doing very good, you're, you're just, that was a shame.
Okay, you gave it a look, and I didn't know if it was a look, though.
I didn't wanna say that, but you know.
So do you have a date that we could aim for, for the, we'd probably need like a month to.
You know, a month is good, we have a couple holidays coming up.
Sure.
And we need the, could, could somebody put that calendar behind you, let's see if we can. Is that not January, November?
Thirteenth, seventeenth.
Okay, um, then, the third is seventeenth, or we could go into February, uh.
Oh, I guess, yeah.
Seven.
So we would need to submit as a twenty-one days prior?
Uh, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen days, okay.
Yeah.
So if, if, you know, I would just suggest that you would go for the first week of February rather than.
Yeah, I think that would make more sense, is that we can, and then, that fourteen days prior, do we, do we submit that also to Southern Maine Regional?
Uh, bringing it in, so we'll take a look at it, we'll, so review it, we can review it real quickly, and then we'll touch base with Southern Maine Regional and see if we want to go up there and sit with a pre-app meeting or get one of the planners to come down here with us.
Okay, all right, that sounds good.
But then you'll have your road cross-sections, contours, high-intensity soil.
So some, you're sitting in the meeting?
Yeah. If you want to, I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm welcome, Andy, you're welcome.
Yeah, you know, I, I'd be careful.
Can I sit in the corner?
I'd be careful about the cards, you don't know when he's ever gonna bring them on. I guess I'm gonna let you forget about that.
That's all right, that's all right.
So I, I think that's, that's where we're gonna leave it tonight.
Okay, that sounds great.
That's, except wishing you all a very good Christmas, and thank you for this.
Yeah. You wanna leave with a big plane, you wanna just take, let me take, Ken, because I mean, there's some colors I gotta change here.
Take it with you.
I'll give you some cream.
We'll wait for the real one.
Yeah, we got some, we got, we got lots of colored pencils here, so.
So we get nothing from January?
No.
If you guys do have it ready, just touch base with me, we can sit down ahead of the planning board anyways, we're gonna wanna do that.
Okay, that sounds great, yeah.
But, you know, our meetings are the first and third, so if you've got something ready to put on, then we'll go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary, could we give you a quick one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, your expert on the table?
No, that was the laser.
No, that was a laser.
Didn't even use it.
We didn't use it.
We didn't use it.
Thanks, have a nice day. You, too, thank you.
Again, I'll go right up to new business, the best practical location application, Sarah Shaw. Two one three seven three nine five one five lot zero one two. Applying to increase the volume within the thirty percent, allowed thirty percent expansion, retaining the existing foundation which would potentially remove more than fifty percent of the value of its existing structure. So, we have some pictures, Ken. On your desktop, I don't know if you can get them.
Actually, I have those.
You like our meetings, because we have a lot of pictures. And it helps you.
So are you saying that removing the, I understand about the foundation and.
That's why I kinda stumbled on it, too, so we'll learn.
So the relocation process is, normally, they're demoing the whole place, or they're putting the foundation underneath it. The other thing that we've been doing a few of is if they're removing more than fifty percent of the value. So in this case, their intention was to. So in this case, their intention was to, and these aren't the best pitches, but they're going to cut the roof off the house and do a second story type, reframe that roof. They should be thirty, forty percent, but as any renovation project happens, when you have a contractor, that snowball just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. They start removing the electrical plumbing, mechanical, replace windows. All of a sudden, you've exceeded that fifty percent very easily. So in this case, they're reusing the foundation, so they're not replacing the foundation and they're keeping the first floor as proposed currently. And just trying to redo, make this look a lot more appealing to the new buyers. Existing systems in the back here and the foundations is in good shape, so my thought was to reutilize it where it is, where they're only cutting the roof off and replacing up in that area. So if it was, when we write the permits, it's for a renovation. If they were actually to get into the project and rip it all the way down to the foundation and pull the foundation out, we'll make them come back to the board because if you're reusing that foundation, that's one of the reasons you guys can keep it in the same spot. You can use the foundation as a key into why it's not being relocated. And as those renovations start getting bigger and bigger and bigger, if they do bring it down and rip up the foundation as well too, then it would come back to the board for relocation. So this is just a major renovation that could possibly exceed fifty percent removal of the value.
But even if they cut the foundation and they ripped it down so that it was fifty percent less, that also could trigger, right?
Correct, that's what they're planning to do here.
That is what they're planning.
They're going to keep the original foundation, keep the first floor walls and the second floor floor system. Is their intention going into it, but intentions changed. So as it going into us, they're probably only at thirty, thirty-five percent of the value is being removed. And at that time, we require them to hire an appraiser to appraise the value that's being removed. And it gets extremely complicated. And where they're saving the foundation, that gives them, the foundation's in good enough shape to reuse and to invest into it, that kinda gives them a reason not to relocate back further.
Just curious, what, how far are they from the water?
Not very.
Twenty-one. He's like pointing them near the, because the closest is at the neighbors, so he went from there.
Yeah, I see that. So he was really locked in by the foundation.
If they were ripping it down and removing that foundation, I'd say there's probably twenty feet you can move this back. And it's Seventh Street. We did a couple of sidewalks out on Seventh Street last fall. It goes straight down, there's a small flat area parked, then it's the camp, then it's the lake. There's really not a lot of.
That was that place we did right behind.
He had the weather, he had the weather outside the house.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it comes down like this and, you know, I mean, you couldn't even build into that hill.
So there is a hill right behind that one, or you said there's about twenty feet potential?
If they were removing the foundation in the whole house, yes, there would be room to relocate. But where the foundation is in good enough shape.
But even if so, so maybe the labor, but so if they cut the top off and then at the point they go in and appraise it, appraise the value and it's less than fifty percent, so even if they keep the foundation, at that point, we could say we need to move it back, even if it's sort of?
Yeah, if it's less than fifty, they're kind of exempt, but the appraiser process is very difficult and cumbersome. And as you get into this renovation, if you think you're going to stay under the fifty percent, and we changed the zoning ordinance last year that said it's a five-year cycle as well too. We didn't have a timeline on it. We have people, there was a couple of relocations that they didn't relocate. And at least I didn't get challenged on it, but we had the rule that you gotta at least be in another calendar year. So they were getting permits in December and came in January, got more permits. And they were able to kind of circumvent that, so we were able to tighten that up a lot. But they were replacing their foundation or trying to, and we tightened up the foundation ordinance too, tightened up the privilege on that as well.
So appraiser involvement would be a condition?
No, the exempt because we're, the board would be looking at relocating this and determining that it is in the best practical location because they're reutilizing the foundation. The foundation's in good enough shape that.
That that is.
It would be a reason why you keep it there. If the foundation was needed work, then that would come up too and that would lose their reasoning to keep it in one spot.
And I think sometimes what we have to do too is realize that if we have people start moving, we can do, it can be more detrimental to the area, to the water, to this, that, and the other thing, than if it just stays. It can have a very adverse effect on things. So we better not just to go. Home side, it appears to be, either someone coming in or someone stealing your truck.
My truck?
I know someone's coming in, we can relax.
Can I get some gas money?
I thought you needed a jumpstart.
I need a drive home today. Quick question, do you guys wanna do a site work, a site bar, remember?
Yeah, what are you doing Tuesday?
That's what I told the house, well, can I come in Tuesday morning? I'm trying to get these days to go by quicker than last year.
Is your sleigh ready?
What do we need? I know where I can buy one. But if you guys wanna do something in the middle or at the end of the week, I'll make it till I'm around it. Before, we have a lot of snow. We have rain coming in. You can walk down there and if you guys want, you can see, I can show you a lot what's going on there, you can see it all. It's up to you.
You guys wanna do a road trip before the snow?
I'm leaving for New York, I won't be back.
I won't be back till the twenty eighth.
I'll be back, yeah, the twentieth, I think it's, so the following weekend I can do it.
Yeah, the following weekend, I mean.
That'd be the fifth?
That would be the fifth, yeah.
When you got a meeting the third, I won't be there for that, but, and.
Think about it, Ken, you'll let me know. And also in pots in January, I'll be gone for a few weeks. Quick display by your, I'm just offering, so be using it for the guys to look at.
We'll get the client's dance out, the sleigh, and we'll.
Sounds good.
I see you good.
Thanks for, okay.
Thank you. You're gonna have a planning with federal law, but I'm just like, sleigh. I mean, guys are good. Someone doesn't have a, we might invite you at.
I can bring my load.
Did they, did they, 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 we got posted?
No.
Okay, so back, back to this, any more questions?
Sir, there would be no conditions.
We're still gonna make them do stormwater management and vegetation where we can.
Right, there'd be a normal list of, and, oh, I don't see. What is the, the snow fence?
Erosion control.
Is that, is that what they're using for erosion control?
Most of them will use stump grindings. It's like mulch, bio-mulch, but it's much narrower and.
Right, right.
It's funny because we'll get a lot of complaints that a development doesn't have any erosion control because they don't see the black soap fence.
Right.
But what they've done is the berm of stump grindings and nobody sees that, so.
And it's actually a better.
Much better because the erosion, the silk fence, the wind just destroys it in the contract. Most, most construction that happens September, October, they put the erosion control up. The dirt guy leaves until May or June and you come back and it's all gone.
It's gone, yeah.
So at least the berm of stump grindings, you can't kill it.
Right.
And it holds back all the erosion.
Is that like erosion control, those?
Correct.
Because we use, we use that on a regular basis at my house.
Almost everyone's thrown it all over the whole site too because you don't have to mow it.
It was just a very different spark on that phone that came out of my.
Simpsons on my speed dial.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's great, yeah.
So, anyway, moving forward, well, septic, well, since septic.
Existing system was installed, it's been a while. Must be over twenty years, I don't remember. Eighty-eight. So it's not under failure, it's a chambered system. They just dug some corners up yesterday. We were out there to take a look at it, making sure it was all intact and still functional where it was kind of older, but thirty years old.
Was it a seasonal?
Correct, yeah.
So it must stay seasonal?
We put those in zone conditions unless they have, I don't know if this would qualify even to convert it to seasonal. This one would probably qualify to convert to seasonal, to your own if they wanted to. But.
What would that process be?
It's just a seasonal conversion permit through the state. Seasons are various here, but I don't see what, what it was. It's a full-chambered septic system they have up there, so that would work.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's one of the controlling factors.
Right.
Yeah, and the other would be you, we need to have enough growth permits for them to obtain one. And I think we're out of growth permits now. We have no more growth permits this year. So usually, if it's, the economy's really slow, we encourage the seasonal conversions to use them up. That way there, people can have them and they don't rush to grab them when the economy's good and people are trying to build houses. So now, if somebody come in with a new house permit now, we wouldn't be able to issue a permit until next year. So at least we're at the end of the year.
We'll be looking at it a couple of weeks.
Exactly, yeah.
And let's, let's say like you only said before, the mountain park got signed.
Oh, thank God. Oh, that was horrible.
Waiting to please out.
Weeks. They rented the town hall. They didn't sleep in there.
Yeah.
On New Year's Eve. So there was no potty going on.
My two boys get.
Okay, let's, I made a promise to somebody who will remain nameless, that we would book ahead tonight. And.
Put on socks and on.
I won't say who it was, but you know, person's smiling. We have one other thing to go. So have we any other questions on this best practical?
I'll make a motion that we approve the best practical location. Two thirteen Seventh Street.
Do I hear a second?
Is there a phrase that we ought to put in there pertaining to the potential expansion of more than fifty percent?
No, that would be just the approval of the location, in the existing location that it is.
A second? I have a second for Yolanda.
Yolanda? So if the foundation is deemed unusable once they get done?
They're coming back.
They're coming back.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstaining? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Brenda. And the last thing we have is housekeeping, which is not comprehensive plan review. It is ordinances. And it has taken, it pushed out the picture for a while. We have to go over our ordinances and what I propose that we do is workshops. You know, any workshop is open to the public. You know, this would be kind of boring, kind of sit there and listen to us, they're more tired and rebuild them. Some things are perfect, some things are not. But we would have the workshops during the day. And I know Gavin had suggested that Thursday was as good a day as any, but it's not because the day doesn't start till four o'clock. And what we'd like to do is since this winter has had these during the day, morning, Ken will sort of take the lead on days he's available because we will need his guidance on this. He will point us in direction. We can do this, what we will do is the workshop is open, if you can be here, be here. If you can't be here, don't worry about it because at our regular meetings, we will review everything that happened at the workshop with the entire board. And if any decisions are made, yea or nay, that will only be done at our evening meetings on the first and third Thursday of the month. And it is something that we need to work pretty quickly on because if we change anything, we have got to let upstairs know. They need from us to know, I think by February first. And then the next deadline is February seventh. It's in my bag over there, so don't know me to be exact dates.
But I think what would be good is if this becomes a cycle, we'll be really prepared for next year. This year wants to be in a rush to get anything made.
We're not in a rush to get anything done, we might only get one thing done.
Yeah.
Maybe two, but we keep it going and we can, you know, rather give it another color for covers.
We're running out of colors.
Maybe rainbow.
Would they ask me and said though, Joyce, in reality, and I was beat dead about this. I mean, I know they want their budgets and this stuff by the first of February or something like that. But zoning, as long as we've got enough time to do our public hearings and stuff, I mean, theoretically, I mean, we could have till the end of March to get all this stuff straightened out.
Yeah, because there's.
But that still leaves you two and a half months before a town meeting.
I think as long as we have a place, you know, can place it and just.
Yeah, and it's ready for the printers.
Know that it's gonna happen, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't post your warrant till whatever, ten days or whatever before a town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, it has to go to the printer, something like that. Because I've got the dates in my briefcase, but, but anyway, I think it's important. You know, there might be a day that Yolanda, you could come, and I know you work, but who knows? You know, it could happen, you know. I'm not holding you to it, you know. So we've gotta get that. So I'm gonna work with Ken via the phone between now and the end of the year to set up some dates and.
Would Wednesdays at noon work for anybody?
Works for me.
Works for me?
Maybe.
And as I've said, this is not a mandatory, you know, if you're not here for this Wednesday, don't come next Wednesday. Because maybe you can come this Wednesday, but you can't next. I can come this Wednesday, but not that one. As long as we all keep it going and everything we do goes back to the Thursday night meeting.
Well, my wife retired next Friday, so I think any Wednesday she can get me out of the house.
Can I have a motion that we do this for, yeah, this on Wednesdays?
I think my wife would be very appreciative.
There you go.
And I know me and Tom have dealt with ordinances dozens of times drafting. And I mean, you're focused, you're trying to look at every loophole in something and you're just shannon may could, should, you have so many different opinions on it. It's like watching paint dry some days.
Sure. So Ken, you're, we're gonna work, I'll be your calendar, since we don't really have to do inspections and such things. When would you like to start this?
January second.
January second? Is that a Wednesday?
That's a Wednesday.
We have a meeting on the third.
So is that gonna be a standard, running time Wednesdays?
Do we wanna do just twice a month or?
Oh, I think the way we did the buy lunch, we're very often, we just meet.
Every Wednesday?
Every Wednesday for a while.
We'll rotate who's buying lunch and make them serve and.
Sure.
I'll make it.
It's always funny, you have a brand in the budget. It's always funny, you have a agenda, the budget agenda.
I don't know.
Okay, peanut butter and jelly.
And we'll shoot for like an hour?
Yeah.
For me and everybody else to come along, that's fine.
Right. So I'll just, I wonder, would I have to post that permitting or just say for the month of January?
I just added onto the planning board website that they have a Wednesday at noon workshop.
Every Wednesday at noon, yeah. Please do not take our regular meetings.
Yeah, I know, I'm on the sidewalk.
I was wondering who the.
Okay. So if that is, if that is agreeable to everybody, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I think the motion would.
We had a reminder email of adjournment.
Yes. I hear that. Want to remind you to adjourn? One second. All in favor? Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.